Councilor Hollitt, it's five thirty and I think you have a quorum here if you want to get started.
Counselor Hollitt, it's five thirty and I think you have a quorum here if you want to get started.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at five thirty January twelfth. And Brian, can you start us off with the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance, flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible.
And Jackie, can you take roll call?
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Whitney. Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
And Jackie, if you could try Counselor Whitney one more time, I thought I saw her come in.
Okay, Counselor Whitney.
Thank you, Jackie. First thing, number four, any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the current agenda or in front of you? Counselor Kenyon.
Yes, thank you. I would like to add mayor and council comments and public comment to the agenda.
Brian, can we put that next right up in front of number five?
Okay, mayor and council comments will be. For A.
Okay.
And then public comment, there is one at the bottom, do you want to do two?
Yes, please.
That'll be for B.
Okay. We do not have any mayor comments, so we probably don't need to do that. Any more additions or corrections? I'm looking at the raised hands. Dawn, was that all we had, Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah, that was on my head.
Okay, so let's go on to for a public comment. Do you have anyone in there inside City Hall for public comment?
I do. Do you guys have anything to say? You want to?
I was really surprised.
Can you sit here so they can hear you? The microphone's pretty weak if you could sit in that chair right there. Yep, please.
Right up front.
Hi there, can we get a name and address for the record?
Mary Gustafson, four eight three five three West Oak Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon.
Thank you, Mary. Go ahead. We have three minutes.
I was shocked to see that two more people have resigned. And I really can't understand. Did we get a city budget for this year? I just don't understand what's going on with our. People who are serving our community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all for City Hall.
All right, so I'm looking through the raised hands on the Zoom and the first one that pops up is Dan Barclay. Go ahead, Dan, you have three minutes.
Dan Barclay, four seven five oh one, Highway fifty-eight. Not knowing what's in the packet, I was astonished that tonight's agenda has paragraph five, so my comments revolve around it. Having spent twenty-seven years sworn to uphold the Constitution and the Oak Ridge City Charter described in the announcement for the Charter Review Committee as the local version of a constitution, essentially creating the structure of government, I can say without hesitation, both of the commitments I have made over the years have the same expiration that I do when that time comes. Looking at paragraph five of tonight's agenda, I hope the council realizes that the reason council has never sought to fill a mayoral vacancy is that there has never been a mayoral vacancy. Counselor Hollitt was unanimously selected as council president twice. And the only job of council president, according to section seventeen of the charter, is to assume the mayor's role in the event of an absence, including resignation. As written, the council president and only the council president has a direct path to the mayor's chair in the event of resignation, which seventy-five percent of those elected as mayor for the city of Oak Ridge have chosen to do in the last decade. The moment Mayor Holston, former Mayor Holston resigned, Counselor Hollitt became mayor. And the vacancy to be filled is the seat she vacated, not the mayor's seat. The charter is a source of broad but not unlimited authority for council to exist, make decisions, and conduct city business that make no mistake. No one, including myself, staff, or even the city attorney, has any right or authority to deviate from charter procedure or distort the charter, be that a procedural error or unauthorized signatures on documents reserved for the mayor's signature. When former Kui resigned and former Mayor Kui resigned in twenty eighteen, council was told a minimum before times by myself, Counselor Kenyon, and former Mayor Shori what the correct process was. Yet former Counselors Forkum and three others, including the council president, council president at the time, ignored the process and seated former Counselor Rowland. In September, former Mayor Holston read a letter that read in part, and this is from the September tenth, twenty eighteen meeting. Counselor Holston said that the council understands and accepts that we made a procedural error in the appointment of the mayor and takes responsibility for those actions. However, because the election in November is just two months away and to move forward with the business of the city, no action will be taken to step back or change the outcome of those actions. This motion is meant to acknowledge to the public our error, error, our mistake, our screw-up, uphold the authority of the charter, and therefore move us forward with the important business the city needs to attend to. So instead of dealing with things like a soon-to-be vacant city administrator, finance director, a longtime vacant community services director, and fire chief that we don't have except in name, but not somebody that can respond, here we are wasting everybody's time, council and citizens, to discuss a mayor vacancy where there isn't one. Council needs to solicit a volunteer to fill the vacancy for the seat that Counselor Hollitt vacated to become mayor and select a new council president. That's the way it works.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Almost there. Last paragraph. So council can choose to uphold their oath to uphold the charter or participate in a known procedural error. The suggestion that anyone other than Counselor President becomes mayor when the mayor resigns is as idiotic as saying Vice President Harris wouldn't become president if President Biden were unable or unavailable to perform his duties. I'm embarrassed that this is even an agenda item or a discussion or anything.
Thank you, Dan.
I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking through the public. I don't see another citizen with a hand up. I do see Counselor Kenyon and Counselor Spleedoff. And let's go, Counselor Spleedoff, do you have a council comment?
Yes. I do agree with Dan Barclay. I've checked over the charter and it clearly states there should not be a discussion of the mayor's vacancy.
Counselor Spleedoff, can we discuss that when we go into work session? That will be the first order of business in work session. Are you able to hold off for just a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Counselor Kenyon, did you have something for Counselor Comment?
Actually, it's still for the additions to the agenda, or I guess council comment would work, but I wanted to add to nominate a council president tonight. Onto the agenda, because I didn't see that on there.
Brian, can you scroll that agenda down just a touch?
I think it would be eight point two or.
Yeah, could we put that in at eight point? Eight point two.
Yes.
Nomination for council president and then appointment. Counselor Kenyon and Counselor Spleedoff, do you have any more comments? Both of your hands are still raised.
No.
All right, hearing no more public comment, we're going to now go into our work session unless city administrator Brian has any additions.
No, nothing to add.
Okay. So let's go into a discussion of mayor vacancy. Brian, did you want to start off with anything?
Yeah, so I understand Mr. Barclay's comments as well as Counselor Spleedoff, but to. I did run this through the city attorney and the city attorney. I provided counsel and in this packet his opinions on the reading of the charter. He thinks it's not completely clear. What he did say is Springfield went through a similar process. They chose, and their charter reads very similar to ours, they did choose to appoint a mayor from within a sitting counselor and then chose to announce the vacancy of a counselor and call for nominations. So. It's, you know, it's our city attorney. I take him at face value whether Citizen Barclay agrees or not. So I would say that what is wrong with appointing a sitting counselor to mayor, if that's you want to do, or do it the other way. So here we are and the agenda bill is in front of you for discussion. Understand that the motions are just for your reference and we can go back to them in special session if that's what we need to do for a motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yeah, I was reading the. In our rules of order and it says in there that we are supposed to. The chair is supposed to take over as the mayor upon the leaving or absence of her position. And she has advocated her position, so therefore there should not be any discussion on appointing it. And I think I read down here, I'm trying to find my glasses here, I can't see him right away. My wife ran off of him. It's, I think the lawyer said that he would advise going ahead and putting. The seating. You, Chrissy Hollitt, as our mayor. He said that was, he said that in his words in here.
Counselor, who was that that said that?
That would have been Matthew.
No, he said. It's not what he said, but you need to reread it.
Can I take a minute and reread that part? What he said was the council should announce the vacancy and call for nominations. Presumably, one of the current counselors will be interested to be the mayor. The council needs to fill the vacancy. I think it makes the most sense for the council to alleviate a current counselor to mayor and appoint a new counselor, but that is not required under the charter. I will say, Audi, I do agree with you. I've researched a lot of other places too, and it's the opposite of what this is saying.
Right, and you can find that in our charter. In. Let me see here again, I just had it open. I pulled up the page again. It would be chapter five. Section sixteen or seventeen, excuse me. The president of the council at its first meeting after the charter takes effect and therefore at its first meeting in each odd numbered year, the council shall elect a president from the membership as provided in the rules. In the mayor's absence, from a council meeting, the president shall preside over it. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions of the mayor's office, the president shall act as mayor. And that's in our, right straight from our charter rules.
The remainder of her term, yes, I agree.
Yes, the remainder of the charter. Remaining of her service. And that's, you know, so I'm going along with Dan Barclay because I read it. I mean, I just read it right out of the book and you can't get any clearer than black and white. And I don't know how to say there is some other way you can interpret that. So. As far as I'm concerned, this should not even be a question because it's in our charter rules. And if we're not going to follow our charter rules, we might as well just throw the whole books away, everything away, and just go helder skelder. And, you know, you can't, you can't run a meeting that way. You have certain rules and laws you have to abide by. We adopted Robert's Rules of Orders. We adopted our charter. Brian, can you scroll that agenda down just a touch?
I think it would be eight point two or.
Yeah, could we put that in at eight point? Eight point two.
Yes.
Nomination for council president and then appointment. Counselor Kenyon and Counselor Spleeloff, do you have any more comments? Both of your hands are still raised.
No.
All right, hearing no more public comment, um, we're going to now go into our work session unless. City Administrator Brian has any additions?
No, no, nothing to add.
Okay. So let's go into a discussion of mayor vacancy. Brian, did you want to start off with anything?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I understand Mr. Barclay's comments as well as Counselor Spleeloff, but. Uh, to, uh. I, I did run this through the city attorney and the city attorney. Uh, I provided counsel and in this packet, uh, his opinions on the reading of the charter. He thinks it's not completely clear. Uh, what he did say is Springfield went through a similar process. Uh, they chose and their, and their charter reads very similar to ours. Uh, they did choose to appoint a mayor from within a sitting counselor. Uh, and then chose to announce the vacancy of a counselor. And call for nominations, so. It's, it's, you know, it's our city attorney. I take him at face value whether, uh. Citizen Barclay agrees or not. So I, I would say that what is wrong with appointing. A, a sitting counselor to mayor if that's you want to do or do it the other way. So. Uh, here we are and the agenda bill is in front of you for discussion. Uh, understand that the motions are just for the, your reference and. We can go back to them in special session if that's what we need to do for a motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yeah, I was reading the, uh. In our rules of order and it, it says in there that we are supposed to. The Chair is supposed to take over as the mayor. Upon the leaving or absence of. Her position. And she has advocated her position, so therefore there should not be any discussion on. Appointing it. And I think I read down here, I'm trying to find my glasses here. I can't. See him right away. My wife ran off of them. Uh, it's, uh. I think the lawyer said that he would advise going ahead and. Putting, uh. The seating. You, Chrissy Hullett, as their, as our mayor. He said that was, he said that in his, his words in here.
Counselor, who was that that said that?
That would have been, uh, Matthew.
No, he said.
The lawyer.
It's not what he said, but you need to reread it.
Buddy, can I take a minute and reread that part? What he said was the council should announce the vacancy and call for nominations. Presumably, one of the current counselors will be interested to be the mayor. The council needs to fill the vacancy. I think it makes the most sense for the council to alleviate a current, a current. Counselor to mayor and appoint a new counselor, but that is not required under the charter. I will say, Audi, I do agree with you. I've researched a lot of other pieces too, and it's the opposite of what this is saying.
Right, and, and you can find that in our charter. In, uh. Let me see here again, I just had it open. I pulled up the page again. Uh, it would be chapter five. Section sixteen or seventeen, excuse me. The President of the Council at its first meeting after the charter takes effect. And therefore at its first meeting in each odd numbered year. The council shall elect a president from the membership as provided in the rules. In the mayor's absence, from a council meeting, the president shall preside over it. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions. Of the mayor's office, the president shall act as mayor. And that's in our, read right straight from our charter rules.
The remainder of her term, yes, I agree.
Yes, the remainder of the charter. Remainder of her, her, her service. And that's, you know. So I'm going along with Dan Barclay because I read it. I mean, I just read it right out of the book. And you can't get any clearer than black and white. And I don't know how to say there is. Some other way you can interpret that. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, this should not even be. A question because it's in our charter rules. And if we're not going to follow our charter rules, we might as well just. Throw the whole books away, everything away and just go held or skelter and, you know. You can't, you can't run a meeting that way. You have certain rules and laws you have to abide by. We adopted Robert's Rules of Orders. We adopted our, our charter. We, in our council rules. And we have to abide by those. Those are all of, all approved by councils. And citizens. So going against this. If you guys go against it. I don't want anything to do with it. It's, uh. You're, you're going against the charter rules and. I, I don't know what else I can say because. You have, you have rules and regulations you have to stick to. You have to stick to them. If you don't stick to them. Then you throw everything out and anything is fine. And if that's what's going to happen. I'll put in my resignation tonight. If they can't stick to the charter and the council rules and the rules of orders. We are not going to be a council. We can't move forward with anything else. Because it's just going to be held or skilled. And so that's why rules and, and laws are. Made out there is for everyone to follow. And if we, if we as the elected citizens. The elected council by our citizens of Oak Ridge can't follow their rules and regulations, then why are we here? So this is a, to me, is a mute point of bringing this up. It should automatically go in there. The only thing we should be, uh. Talking about now is, is electing a council president. And putting a chair seat open for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Spleeloff. Uh, Counselor Whitney. Can we recognize that she's in the meeting?
Yeah, I've been in here since when you were going over additions and corrections. So I've been here for a while.
Reflects that. Go ahead for your comment, Counselor Whitney.
Um, yeah, thank you. So I would like to say that, um. I agree with Brian bringing this forward and bringing us options. I hear what everybody's saying and I understand what you're saying. Um, but I think it was just to allow us options, not saying we had to do it one way or the other. Um, and with that said, also, I think it's important to remember back. I believe it was Mayor Coe, when he resigned, um. Gary Carl was actually council president at that time. And he did not want to become mayor. And so then it got transferred over and he relinquished it to Judy Roland. And, you know, so there are other things that can happen. And I, I think, um, there's flexibility within the law and I think it's important. To listen to the options that our attorney gives us because they are the specialists. In this field and, and this is their job. Um, we can read the charter and interpret it how we want, but, but they are. The legal professional. And so, you know, giving us options, I think is a really good idea. And, you know, where we go with that is where we go with that. I just, um. I, I hate to, I feel like the tone of this meeting has just, you know, with that piece just jumped off as. A game of blaming somebody for something they haven't done. Um, so I'd really like to see us just discuss it and. And discuss how we want to move forward instead of, um, feeling like we're attacking. Um, people or each other, um, because we are a team and we do need to move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Was that all?
That is, thank you.
Counselor. Counselor Kenyon?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to say that I think the charter, I interpret the charter. As that our council president would automatically fill the role of mayor in the event of a vacancy. And the reason why I believe that is actually twofold. Uh, one is. That with one exception, which was the, what Bobby just mentioned where. Mayor Coe resigned and, uh, Gary Carl, counselor. Did not want to become, so he opted to give it to Judy. Um, but as it turned out, the, the attorney who was actually hired by the city at that time. Did advise the council that they. Did that error. And he suggested that they acknowledge it publicly and they did, which is what, um. Dan Barclay read out loud earlier, so I won't read it again, but I, I did print it and I was prepared to. Um. So that's one reason. And then the other is that, um. Which, well, I guess that's both reasons. One is that, uh. Our history, we've always done it that way, which says to me that we were always following the charter. And then number two, when it was done differently in error, the council got the advice of their attorney and discovered it was in error and admitted it publicly. So I believe we should follow our charter and. Appoint, uh. I mean, as a matter of procedure, we might as well appoint our counselor pre- president to become the mayor. Um, and I'm happy to make a motion as such, uh, when we get to that part of our meeting today. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Uh, Counselor Spleeloff, is your hand up again?
Yes, it is. Okay, so. I mean, I've just read over the, the thing again in here. I agree with your first position. The council will need to fill the vacancy. I think it makes the most sense for the council to alleviate. A current counselor to mayor and appoint a new counselor. But that is not required under the charter. Well, I don't know where he got. In, under our charter because it clearly states under the charter that the. Vice will be the, the president of council will become mayor. And there is no, no quotes under it. There's no wells, no nothings. It's. Dates clearly, that's what happens. And that person works throughout the rest of that term. Then when the end of that term comes, that becomes a voted session and that's in November. So the term will run to the first of January. And so we need to. Move forward, I guess, and, and get into making the motions and continue on.
Thank you, Counselor Spleeloff. Is that it?
Uh, that's it.
Unless you have another comment.
I did have one more if there's time. Um, I wanted to add that I'm happy to add this.
Actually, one second. Counselor Whitney had her hand up first, but now it's down.
Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Whitney, did you have something?
Um, no, not, only that I'm not trying to argue with anybody about, um. What they're proposing in any way. I just wanted to point out. Um, that I don't think this was brought forward in a way to. And be controversial. I think it was brought forward in a way to allow us options. And to give us all the information available to us. And, and again, to say that. This is our city attorney giving this to us. And, um, you know, we really need to acknowledge. Um, his expertise in this field and, and what he's proposed. And, and it's more than one option, so. You know, just to remember that I. I, I, I just, I feel like this discussion, um, just has such a negative tone to it and, and I really. Um, don't want to see that and don't, you know, I just don't want to see us going in that direction. I think we could do better, so.
Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add that I believe. That it's, uh, probably why since our charter review committee is actually starting their first meeting next week. That I would be happy to add this as a topic for that committee to. Uh, discuss in our, in our process over the next several months. This is obviously a. Becoming a controversial way the charter is written. Maybe we can fix it. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Does anyone, any of the other counselors have any comments? I'll just keep mine real short. Um, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that, um. The first time that I became council president, which was January two thousand and nineteen, I was advised by the mayor. That upon her resignation, if that were to happen, that I would fill, um, the mayor's seat. That was never a question to me. Um, she had just recently been through the process that happened with the prior, um. Mayor Judy Roland and Council President Gary Carl. I was present during those meetings, so I'm very familiar with what happened and how that all transpired. The, um, acknowledgement from the council in reference to the advice that they got back from the. Right attorney at that time. So, um, I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that I have fully acknowledged that it would be my responsibility. And I had also spoke to, um, the prior council president, Amy Buckmeyer, at one time, and she had always said that it has always been. Um, of that, um, expectation. So, um. I just wanted to put that out there that I, I know we've talked about it in our council rules before as well. And, um, for me, I, I do respect and appreciate attorneys' advice and opinions. But, um, as I always try to remember that that is an opinion, it may be an educated opinion. But the charter really is the word of the citizens and, um, legal opinions just. Don't change what the intention of a charter means. So for me, um, I am going to stick by what I believe the intention of that charter. Was because, uh, I think our job is here. What we're supposed to be doing is listening to what the community has sent for us. And that's what I. Um, made my oath to follow was the charter. I did make an oath to follow advice from the community. I don't have anything else to say on that. Um, actually, I do have one more thing. I do think that it's appropriate for the city administrator to bring forth. Um, information if it's sent to him. So I'm okay that we discussed it and I'm not offended at all. Any more discussion on this, we can go to the next.
Uh, given it appears that, uh, we'll, we'll be looking to, uh, make a call for nominations to fill the council seat. Um, I just kind of get a consensus from the group that, uh, that you want that to happen immediately and you want to run for thirty days. And then be addressed at the next regular meeting after that.
That would be my, uh, preference, but what did the rest of the counselors feel?
You too.
Kenyon, Spleeloff. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Bjarnson has her hand up. I missed that.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the call for nominations, you cut out a bit there for a second. Um, is for the empty council vacancy will be posted for applicants because the, the terminology nominations. You're talking about applicants for the open council seat, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on that? Uh, Counselor Whitney?
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying. I just heard my name.
Have any objections or support for advertising for our counselor seat? Can you guys hear me?
Oh, I don't have any objections.
Thank you. If there's no more discussion, let's go on to number six.
Uh, one, one more item, uh, just for my clarification. When it comes time to do the appointment in regular session. Uh, how do you want to go about that? Do you want to do a ballot vote or would you rather just, uh. Review the packages and, and make a motion from the floor?
Uh, I prefer a motion from the floor, but what does everyone else feel?
Fine with me.
Fine with me too. Don, if you're talking, you're muted.
Thank you, Counselor Spleeloff. Um, I just said I agree with that as well. That's been our practice in the past.
I've seen it done both ways here, but, uh, that's fine. Motion from the floor and be the way it's done. That's all I have for item five.
Number six, on to, uh, discussion for city administrator pro tem recruitment.
Okay, uh, I bring this up to try to get some, uh. Movement on this. Uh, obviously, we're not going to have time to, uh, get a permanent CA in here before my departure, so there will be a requirement for a pro tem. So the questions I, I bring for you is, um. Do you want to use, uh, city staff and city council sta- uh, resources to. Uh, assist in this effort or do you want to reach out to laying council of governments to assist in this? Um, and we, you know, we can advertise or, uh, you have a, a list of some tentative or people that have. Uh, advertised themselves as available on the League of Oregon Cities website. Uh, can be done by direct contact if you want to do it that way. So, uh, any discussion around those questions?
I can't hear anything, sorry.
Me neither.
Did you hear me, Counselor Kenyon, or is it just Counselor Hullett you can't hear?
That's correct, what you just said.
I just can't hear Counselor Hullett.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say that I would like to see the full council, uh, work together to. Do the process of. Hiring a pro tem and posting. For the, um. City administrator. Basically, I'd like both process to be handled the same way. By the council rather than paying for, from the League of Oregon Cities. As a way to help, um, their finances right now for number one. Unless we get to a point where we're really stuck, at which point I think we could reconsider. Um. But I also wanted to say that. Let's see here, I want to make sure. Um. Further down on the list, it says what would be the desired start date. And I would like to suggest March first, twenty twenty-two. And then the last, um. Item there is what compensation would be offered for the C A pro tem. Actually reviewed the minutes from the meetings of, uh, last couple of years when. We went through two, uh, pro tem. CAs in just a few months' time. And I looked at the contracts that I had for, um. Uh, I, I forget her name, but his name was Philip Messina. And the council actually had at that time, rather than working as a full council on the process. They selected a smaller committee of three counselors who met and reviewed applications and. Made a recommendation, uh, to the rest of the council, which the council ended up going with. But they discussed all the salaries in executive session, so I'd like to see that we would do. But they discussed all the salaries in executive session, so I'd like to see that we would do the same. That we would have an executive session, maybe sometime within the next couple of weeks where we could discuss what, as a council, what we would like to see both for the pro temp and for the permanent replacement CA. Discuss that in executive session and then, and then direct our city administrator to, you know, do his best within a certain, whatever we set the minimum and maximums to be depending on experience. And then he would move forward with the contracts for those positions. Or, well, for sure for the pro temp and then probably the pro temp would be the one that we would direct for how we want to move forward with a permanent CA. And that's, that's my opinion. And that's everything. Thank you.
Counselor Whitney?
Okay. I would like to see us ask ElCog to assist us with the process with our pro temp. Just to make sure that we're complying with all the hiring laws and don't run into any legal deficiencies with it. And I, you know, I know we've used them for a lot of things and they are a resource for us. And their involvement can be a little or a lot, but I think just enough involvement from them just to help make sure we're being legally sufficient in what we're doing and that we don't run into any issues. I think their guidance can really be helpful with that. And, you know, before we talk about wages and that sort of thing, I think it would be nice to figure out exactly which process we want to use if we're looking at trying to hire from people that have put out an interest in this, if we want to actually put out and list an open, advertise for an open position for this. Or if we want to go through the League of Oregon Cities and, you know, have people apply through that process of finding essentially retired city administrators that are willing to fill in pro temp. Personally, I would I would like to see maybe a combined way of doing it, you know, people that we've had that have kind of put their hat in the ring and said, I'm interested in this. Allowing them to apply along with working with the League of Oregon Cities to put an advertisement there for the, for any retired city administrators that may be looking to be a pro temp somewhere. And just kind of get a larger pool of people that would be entrusted in being a pro temp for us. And because I think it's going to help to have more options and to really put our feelers out there and then really start talking about the money and, and what we're looking at. Because I think in the, in the meantime, we can get more of that information. You know, once we define, you know, where we're wanting to look for a pro temp at as to really how much money we're going to have to come up with and, and what that might look like for us.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Go ahead, Counselor Splealaw.
Yeah, in our packet, I think we've got six people that were, that ElCog said was available. And I don't think those people are all available. I was able to contact one person. He used to be the city administrator here. And he is not available. So that makes me wonder what the rest of the list is here. If all the rest of those, that six people that was sent to us by ElCog, if they're available to even, even do this. So I think we need to put out a advertisement to get it. Because evidently ElCog sending something out that's, that's not correctly true.
If I might clarify, the list is pulled from a database that's maintained by the League of Oregon Cities of folks that have volunteered their services to be interim or pro temp city administrators. Just because they're in the database doesn't mean they're available. So it's not.
Okay, thank you. So the, the last of six people that we have are not, we don't know for sure if they're even available now or not.
No, not until you reach out and, and speak with them directly.
Okay, thank you.
You're calling on me, Chrissy. I can't hear you. Audie already asked my question. I'll take my hand down. Thank you.
I, I would like to post the advertising and see who is interested. See who we get. I do kind of agree though with Counselor Whitney about using ElCog on a very limited basis. I did sit through the meeting. Mayor Holston and I.
I can't hear Chrissy.
Mayor Holston and I met with Brenda from ElCog. And they talked about the services could be a lot or a little bit. And I think maybe using them on a very, very limited basis might be smart for us in the long run. At least if we met together as a council and lined out exactly how we wanted to do it, as Counselor Kenyon was saying. And then we have that process looked over quickly by ElCog, just to make sure that we're not doing anything that could be foreseen as illegal or unfair hiring practice. I think that's kind of what Counselor Whitney was getting at. We only have a very small amount of free hours from ElCog and it's, I believe it's only 15 hours. So I think if we need ElCog, I would rather use those hours towards the permanent CA recruitment instead of the pro temp.
You cut out most of that.
Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer, I have the contracts that we did with Marsha and also with Phil Messina. I could share those with Brian and ask him to share with the entire council so that we could review those in the background. And/or if he wants to dig them out from City Hall, he could do that as well. But I also agree with advertising right away tomorrow, maybe for the pro temp seat. And I would also be okay if we have some free time left with what we, the annual amount we paid for with ElCog. And we've got some questions, we could run it by them. But otherwise, we could always weigh whether or not whatever the questions are, like say we, say we come up with what we'd like to see in our contract for the pro temp. We could weigh whether or not it'd be best to run that through our city attorney or ElCog. At that, you know, at that time, when we get to that point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Whitney?
Thank you. So hopefully I'm understanding and I captured what I believe I've heard. So I've heard that we want to advertise right away, which I think is great. And that we want to use ElCog, you know, just to help us with the legal sufficiency of this and as little as possible because we want to maintain the hours that we have ready or available through them for our permanent CA process. And then also with the advertisement, I would, and I'm not sure if this is what people were meaning as well, but I would like to make sure we reach out to the people that are listed in the League of Oregon Cities as being a possible availability as a pro temp. And ask them if they would be interested as we're advertising. That way we can have a larger pool to look at. And then also I am in full agreement of all of us participating in this together and working together as a team to make this decision. I'm sure that the link may already have a list of good questions for candidates and to ask in your hiring process and really give an idea of what you're looking for with those questions. I think as we talk about, you know, the, the interview questions that we would ask people. It's important to really outline as we ask that question, really what, what we're wanting to see and an answer to make sure that people are understanding what we're looking for and are, and are providing us the information that we need to make the best possible decision. So I would really like to see if we could reach out to them or see, you know, ElCog may also have a list of questions as well, or we may have the questions from, you know, prior city administrator interviews and, and things to look at to help with this. But if I'm not understanding correctly, please let me know, but I would really, really like to make sure we have a, a larger pool with a lot of options available to us so we can really make a good, solid decision.
Counselor Whitney? Go ahead, Counselor Splealaw. You're on mute.
I'd like to ask one question. For now, sitting city administrator. Would there be any way that you would come back? Or not? Or have you set your goals elsewhere? I'm done. Brian, if you could answer that, please.
Counselor would have to take a look at my original letter of resignation and see if they could possibly, or see if they could address the issues that we originally had, because otherwise I don't see the working relationship being cohesive. So that would, that would have to be addressed before I would consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Splealaw. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that we all agree that when we post the pro temp and the permanent CA positions that we, that we would be accepting applications from internal and external people, I guess. I don't know how to word that otherwise. I also wanted to add that I think everything, the way Bobby just explained it, how she understood what we've discussed so far, I think I understand it the same way. If that helps you, Bobby. And that's all.
It does. Thank you.
Uh huh, yeah.
Counselor Kenyon, this is CA. I do have some concerns over, when you say internal, do you mean internal to the staff? Possibly is that what you're discussing?
Yes.
So I, I have some concerns with regard to the pro temp, not the permanent selection. A pro temp, virtually all of our remaining employees besides the police chief, myself and Sergeant McPherson are, are unionized, non-exempt personnel. So if you have one of those folks take a leave of absence or whatever they're going to do to do a temporary job, they would, you know, it, it would be a conflict of interest to have them come perform as the chief executive of the city and perhaps hypothetically change policies that might benefit them or their department. And then go back into that position and benefit from the changes they made. So I think that you'd have some, you'd have a risk there, number one, both for the city and for the individual. And two, a conflict of interest. So I would, I would caution that you probably don't want to use a internal pick for pro temp. Permanent selection, that's fine because that's the job and they're going to stay there. But the assumption is if it's a pro temp that they might possibly want to go back to their original position when they're done.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Really quick, so if we have an eternal candidate apply that is union represented at that time, Brian, would you be willing to reach out and get a legal opinion from our attorneys on that for us? So that we're completely covered?
I'd reach out to the city attorney as well as the union representation to see what their thoughts were, because I, I don't know that even the union would be excited about this.
Yeah, that would, if, if that happens, you'll do that for us?
Correct, if you'd like me to.
Okay. Yeah, that would be fantastic. And that wasn't me laughing. That was Abby. She's back here watching videos.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Go ahead, Counselor Splealaw.
I agree with the, for city administrator. It could, can be construed as a conflict of interest unless the person was to quit that job and come as pro temp. But he couldn't go back into that job after pro temp was over because it would be a conflict of interest. And no, that's right. But as a full-time, it would be okay, but not a pro temp. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Splealaw. Go ahead, Counselor Poper.
So if a pro temp comes in, can that pro temp then apply for the full-time position? Or is the pro temp only going to be there for a certain amount of time until someone else is hired?
The pro temp can still apply just like anyone else.
Thank you. It's a six-month position, right, Brian?
Maximum of six months, but it's whatever you need inside of it.
Any other comments from counselors? All right, let's go on to the next item.
Okay, I wanted to bring this out because we do need to get started on this process as well, and that's the permanent city administrator recruitment. I looked in the shared folder and it didn't look like many people had checked in to even review the documents that we need to move ahead with the advertisement, the script, job description and the like. So I would encourage you to go look at those documents and use, mark it up using using the, the ability to leave comments and make remarks. Also, same question about ElCog involvement. For another executive search form, though, that, that's probably going to be cost prohibitive. And then not so much an exact compensation, but usually what you see in advertisements are a window of what the compensation, you know, a top and a bottom number. Depending on qualifications is what it normally says. And then once you, we need to set a date of when, essentially how long you'll take applications and when do you want to start the first review? But obviously, that's usually included with an advertisement, so you, you need to start thinking about that. What's your target? And that can be changed. It's, you know, if you don't have enough applications, you can What's your target? And, and that can be changed. It's, you know, if you don't have enough applications, you can reset that date, so. Anyway, then for, for discussion.
I have a question for you, Brian. Um, on the advertisement for the pro tem. Sorry to go back to this, but we reviewed that and made some edits to it a couple meetings back. And I don't believe that we have had that document come back to us with edits on it. Would you happen to have that so that we could see that before it's posted?
Uh, former Mayor Holston was the one, uh, with that and I, I'll reach out to her and see what she's got. And I, I bought, wasn't that for the permanent CA position, not the pro tem?
Yes, I believe that's accurate.
The short, two-page one is the one I'm talking about.
About the, uh, Council Kenyon brought out about the increased responsibilities and that kind of thing, that, that was the permanent. Uh, ad- advertisement and job description, so. The pro tem, I, it's pretty relatively simple. It's, it's short and sweet and, and many other cities have put them out, so I'll just grab a, a model from them.
Thank you. All right, um, Counselor Coker, go ahead.
Brian, can you send me that link again? Cause I did try to get into it and all I kept getting was broken link.
Yeah, I sure will and, and maybe I'll just, well, yeah, I'll try to send you a link and, and I'll include the documents. But obviously if you can get into the link, it's better, cause you can share and collaborate.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other counselor discussion on seven point O? Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Okay, um, so I agree with us using El Cog. I think you alluded to that already when we were talking about the pro tem. Um, so, you know, I'm in agreement with that. Um, and I think it's great. Um, if we can all review the recruitment package documents. I know I haven't dug in it as much as I should have, so I am guilty of not doing that. Um, but I will commit a lot more time to that. Um. And I, as for, you know, looking at when we wanna start advertising and our first review date. I, I almost feel like we should wait, um. You know, to advertising before we have our pro tem start, but maybe start our review process when we. I, I don't know. I'm really struggling on when. Um, to do that, cause if we advertise, we're going, I, I would assume we would give thirty days for people to respond. I know, um, last time when we went through this process, you know, just because of the amount of time it took. We lost a lot of people that had applied or been interested, um, just because people found other jobs, you know? And so I, I, I'm just really struggling on, um, how we want that timeframe to look. Um, but as I talk about this, the other thing that's really in the back of my head. Is really making sure we have, um, a finance director in place come March first. Whether it's someone that's been hired or, um, El Cog filling in for us. I don't think we've discussed that. We keep talking about other things, but that one just has me really, really, um, worried and antsy. You know, cause it's our finances, so I really wanna make sure, um, we're looking at that before we. Get too far, you know, down the road with these other things. I just don't wanna lose sight of that ball. So I, I don't know. I, I don't know what anybody else thinks for timeframes or what other people's ideas are, but. I guess I'm really, um. Not sure on that piece, you know, if we wanna wait until the pro tem's in place. If we wanna start it sooner, cause this is, um, you know, almost mid-January. So I don't know where we are with the advertisement yet and not all of us have. May not have reviewed all the recruitment package documents to provide comments, so I mean. Really, how do we want this timeline to look? I know I'm kinda stumbling around with words here because I'm just, I'm having a hard time. Really visualizing, you know, how a timeframe will look and kinda how to map it out. And I'm very visual on looking at things, so really for me to just see things on a calendar, on when they're gonna happen, how they're gonna happen. And what those expectations are would be really helpful for me.
I absolutely feel where you're coming from on that, Counselor Whitney.
If I could respond to a couple of things that Counselor Whitney mentioned. If, if we're, you know, if you're locked into a pro tem, which it sounds like we are, that you're right, there is not an enormous rush to. To get that permanent city administrator advertisement out there. Uh, by the charter, you have till one September to, uh, fill that position, so that's a, that's kind of a. One date to keep in mind and then, uh, finance director. I am conducting some pre-interview phone calls with, uh, a couple of folks next week. That have their packages in, uh, and are seem qualified, so, uh, there is some good news there.
So when you have an interview panel for that, or will you be putting together an interview panel for that?
Yeah, tradition would be that, at least my tradition is that, uh, we try to get one counselor and, uh, a citizen. And a staff member to, uh, conduct those interviews, so.
Okay.
That would be the process if, uh, if the pre-interview goes well on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Brian, is there a possibility we could use, uh, someone from El Cog like we did last time?
For what?
For the finance position.
Uh, yeah, but, uh, you know, the person that we used and she was great, Kena, but. Uh, they're busy and they had, you know, from my observations work since they, they were here operating for about a month, two months. Before we finally got a finance director that was ready to go. It, you know, they are very time limited, so I, I would, you know, at all costs try to get a, uh, your permanent finance director in here. Rather than counting on El Cog and I don't know what Kena's availability is right now.
Is that something you could check on, just so that we have an answer that it was a yes or no or a no?
Yeah, that would be a good plan B and I will check with Brenda.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, with me working for Senior Disability Services, we're under El Cog. And part of the things that I do at work has to do with fiscal and fiscal is what, um, Kena's in charge of. And so I know that they are always busy and it's really hard to get answers, um, when you need them. And they're very, very stretched thin. Um, so just from my personal experience, that is what I know. But I think they are an excellent option as a backup for sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I was wondering if it's okay to use, uh, El Cog as an interim. Would it, would it also be okay to use one of the candidates? That are, um, currently on the roster for the CA position. As an interim, because I did notice, I don't remember which one, but one of them had a, a background in finance for cities. Or at least the one that I read, um, a couple of months ago when this, when I found out about this announcement.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too, Brian.
So you're, you're asking, do, do we wanna try to use an interim finance director using one of the candidates from the League of Oregon Cities database?
Well, I'm actually asking for clarification that we would be allowed to if that need comes up. If we just don't have a good candidate before the, before the deadline. Uh, could we invite one of those people to? Fill in on interim basis while we continue to search.
There's nothing that would prohibit that, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on seven point O?
Um, I was wondering if we could see the, uh, the main agenda for the meeting up on the screen. Thank you.
Counselor Whitney.
Um, yeah, just for further discussion, is there a way, um. That you or Brian can work together to kind of come up with a couple suggested timelines? For the recruitment for the city administrator position? And then bring that back to us, maybe at the next council meeting to really make some final decisions.
I think that's a good idea.
So you'll work with Brian on that and? Okay, yeah, personally, um, it would be really nice to have a couple options. And, you know, with some pros and cons to go with them.
And you're talking about timeline as far as pro tem and then also permanent.
I'm talking about timeline for permanent. Um, pro tem, I think we've pretty much decided that we want to advertise that. And as soon as possible and that we're wanting to look at that advertisement before we put it out there and start on that process. I think as a group, we've already, you know, agreed to do that. Um, but for the permanent position, I'd really like to see a couple options of a timeline and really be able to. You know, see it on a calendar, you know, what to expect exactly when and kinda how that could look. And, and you know, the pros and cons to either way, you know, for the options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, or Brian, did you have anything to say on that?
Uh, just to clarify, you, Counselor Kenyon mentioned, you know, let's get the pro tem advertisement out there, possibly even tomorrow. Does counsel actually wanna review the advertisement for the pro tem? Cause that's gonna add another week, I would guess, trying to get that through all of council and approved.
Um.
Do you have the advertisement for pro tem available to put up on the screen?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do you have the advertisement for pro tem to put on the screen or do you need to develop that?
I would just go get a model advertisement from one of the many other cities that are currently looking for pro tem's and, and model ours after that.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I would be okay with that as long as it's, uh, fairly generic and doesn't specify like, uh. What they would be responsible for while they were here, cause we would wanna detail that in, in the contract. You know, does that make sense? We, um, Brian, we could just make it very generic that we are looking for a pro tem city administrator.
Submit an application and then.
Yeah.
After selections, when you hammer up the details.
Yeah.
I like that a lot. Did you have anything else, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, it can wait till we go into, um, our regular special session shortly.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
I just wanted to say I like that as well, um, you know, anybody looking at a generic, um, advertisement. Worth their grain of salt of being able to hold that position would know what it entails. Um, in more detail, so I think that's fine.
Agreement. Does any counselors disagree with that?
No, I'm fine with that.
No, I'm fine.
Fine with that.
Thank you, Brian. So going forth with that, you can probably get that advertised since you're gonna do something fairly generic. Uh, that can be advertised pretty quickly.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I just wanted to add that I agree with, uh, what Bobby was saying regarding. Maybe being able to look at a timeline written out on paper. Um, to help ensure that, that. That part where, you know, once we've received the applications. Um, that we would be able to move through that next process fairly quickly so that we wouldn't. Potentially, uh, miss out on a candidate who might, you know, might have had other interviews. As well, so, um, and if you're needing any help with that. I would be happy to offer some assistance if you want to.
Sure.
Or, or another counselor might be willing as well.
I would.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any more discussion before we go into special session? Brian, did you have anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. Go back into special session at six forty-three.
So I place this here to allow, uh, for any motions as a result of the work session, so there's nothing prepared. But, uh, if, unless a counselor wants to bring a motion to the floor concerning any of the business.
Uh, Counselor Kenyon?
I move to nominate our council president, Chrissy Hollitt, to fill the mayoral seat. Through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two and post for a vacancy on the council.
I second that.
Motion seconded by Counselor Splewaw. Discussion? No discussion heard? Bobby, can you call for the vote, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
That motion passes? Thank you, guys. Um, could we just, uh, verify what the dates would be for the advertisement on the open counselor seat? One second, Counselor Splewaw. I see you.
Are you asking counsel?
I'm asking Brian, I'm sorry.
It'd be, uh, through the next final, biennial general election, so it'd be the same as, it'd be December thirty-first.
I'm sorry, I meant, um, when, at what meeting would we vote for that new counselor seat?
Uh, if you wanna push the application, call for applications out immediately. I would think that, uh, if you wanna give it a thirty-day lead time, it would be sometime, probably gonna be the first meeting in March.
Um, well, if we put it out right now, I think we could do it by the second meeting in February, couldn't we?
Uh, maybe, it, it's just colliding all the packages and everything. It's, it's, it's a few, only a couple of days there and the, if you look at the lead time for the city council packet, it gets, gets tight, but we can try.
Okay, are we all okay with the first meeting of March to vote on a new counselor?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Okay, good, so let's go ahead then and we've got that date as it'll be March third would be the voting of applications. And the next topic would be nomination of a council president unless Counselor Splewaw has something else?
Yes, I do. I, I just wanted to make sure, I, uh. You voted on voting yourself in as the, the mayor. I don't think that's legal by our rules, so your vote would not count. But it still passes. I just wanted to bring that forward. Yeah, you'd be voting yourself into a position and I don't think.
Council President. All right, you can bring that information to a, a next council meeting if you like.
Thank you.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda would be, excuse me, go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Um, if you were going to council president next, that was what I
Yeah, um, next thing on the agenda would be, I think it's eight point two. The nominations of council president. I don't have an agenda, I'm going to kind of wing it here for that portion. I think the first thing we should probably do is call for nominations of council president. First one, raising their hand would be Counselor Whitney.
Um, I would just like to express that I have an interest in being a council president. I think it's something that I would enjoy and I think it would help balance our council a little bit. Um, I just wanted to express that interest.
Okay. Counselor Spleeloff?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Kenyon.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Coker.
I have an interest in that position as well.
Okay. So we have three people interested in council, uh, president. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I would just like to mention that I appreciate the nomination. But in order to try and make this a smoother process for votes, I'm willing to step back from the possibility of being voted for and just unless there's any other interested parties, leave it between Bobby and Michelle.
Okay. Counselor Whitney?
Uh, yeah.
Your hands raised?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to lower it. Sorry about that. Well, actually, do we need to nominate ourselves? Are we waiting for a nomination or how do you want to proceed?
Good question. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I'll nominate Bobby.
Okay. Um, do we have a second? We have a second nomination for Bobby? Hearing then, do we have a nomination for Counselor Coker?
I'll second.
I'll nominate Michelle, uh, Counselor Michelle Coker.
Um, Counselor Spleeloff, are you seconding for Counselor Coker or are you seconding for?
For Counselor, Counselor Coker.
For Counselor Coker. Okay, I have a nomination on the floor for Counselor Michelle Coker and a second for Michelle Coker. Michelle, is there anything you want to say?
I'd just like to thank you all for nominating me and I will do my best in this position. And I have full faith in Oak Ridge coming back to what Oak Ridge needs to be.
Thank you, Counselor Coker. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Congratulations, uh, Counselor Coker and thank you both for stepping up to do that. There are some extra duties and um, Michelle, you'll need to contact Brian about getting yourself on the checking accounts and, and all that. So shoot him an email and ask him about how to go about doing that.
Will do. Thank you all.
Is there anything else from council? If there's not, I'm going to go into public or go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Just really quick, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Hollitt and Council President Coker. Thank you guys both for what you're doing to the city.
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you.
Uh, no, if there's no, uh, more business from city administrator or counselors, go into the last order of business, which is public comments. And looking at the Zoom feed, I see Citizen Dan Barclay. Go ahead.
After listening to the discussion of, of paragraph five, which was almost painful, just, just point out a couple of things that were said. Sitting counselor mentioned options as far as the council president. Council doesn't have options. They have a duty to uphold the charter this for, to uphold. And as far as the charter, the charter is never input interpreted. It is always implemented. Most of the problems over the last several years is because, because, uh, you know, council chose not to do that. And in that charter, more than fifty times, word shall appears, shall, according to any dictionary you want to look at or a senior law professor at, at the U of O in an article written for the Oregon State Bar that I provided counsel, when used, and it's often overused, but when used, shall is a mandate. It's a requirement. It's not a negotiation. It's not an interpretation. It's what you do. And if you don't like the word shall in the city charter, then it needs replaced with, with, you know, another word, but when it's used, it's required. It's not an option. So there are no options. And as far as legal advice, you want to get it from a city attorney, the last, the one we fired advised counsel via the city administrator straight into a procedural error that council officially acknowledged as a procedural error unanimously. And guess what? Two months later, every one of them left office after a general election. So there is no options. There is a duty. And lastly, and I don't even know why it's, it's been a discussion to this point. And I, and I understand it's new, but the correct terminology, whether anybody likes it or not, because nobody really cares. The council president becomes mayor. That way the citizens in the charter they wrote can select or elect a mayor and have a backup plan where the president steps in when, when the mayor becomes absent. So that the citizens have a voice in the senior elected official or who replaces that senior elected official in the event of resignation. It's not intended that four or more counselors would say, well, I like this person or don't like that person. And we're just going to seek whatever mayor we please. That's not the way it works. You have a duty to uphold the charter and council has acknowledged it the last time. And don't bring the last time into example, because at no point, to the best of my knowledge, did Gary Cole ever, ever say that he was unwilling to perform duties as mayor. What he did say, as I recall, was that he ran a business and as a business person, I can understand that he didn't have the time to devote the amount of time that Mayor Coey devoted to, to, to the office because he had, he had business things to do. But he never, never said, you know, he, he never refused to accept his duty. He, he said he was too busy to perform at the same level and that was it. So, you know, the charter is there for a reason. Use it.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Sarah Ultimus.
Hi, thank you. And sorry, I did not make it on earlier to give comments before the meeting. I'm still getting home from work. Um, so a couple of things, Dan's right, attorneys get things wrong. They're not perfect people. Um, so it's helpful to have citizens that are keeping close track on these things. I also want to thank the counselors who have stepped up in these leadership positions. Um, we definitely have a lot in front of us as a community to tackle over the next year. Um, I want to come back to something I was hoping that would have some more discussion tonight and it didn't. And that's the possibility of working with our current city administrator to find a way forward for him to stay in his seat. Um, I'm really worried that this process of hiring a pro temp and then hiring another CA is going to take hundreds of your hours of time. And that does not leave you the time to really focus on our bigger issues um, around our budget and what we're going to do with a lot of the challenges we're facing and not only to mention the opportunities that could be there to get funding that I've mentioned is available, a lot of funding that's available. Um, so I know you guys have heard me say this probably three times over the last three months and um, I have had a conversation with Brian in December and asked him if he'd be willing to say, he answered the same answer he gave tonight to Counselor Spleeloff. And I think it's a good answer. And if you go back to that letter, what the CA said he felt was lacking was a relate, a working relationship based on trust and mutual respect. And what I hear there is a keyword relationship. And we all get sideways in our relationships in life, both personally and professionally. But the great thing about being human is we can find ways to resolve those issues. Um, I think we have a CA that's doing his job really good. Um, I think there's probably things that can be improved on. All of us can do that. I think you as a council have not addressed whether or not you trust the CA. Um, if he has that impression or asked or said anything to, to counter that impression that he said he had. And so I would like to see you guys have some discussions on the possibility of saving our city ten thousands of dollars uh, in this process with hiring a, a pro temp, which is going to cost us quite a bit more. And the additional funds that we'll have to put up to hire a new CA. Um, I think that you guys know that, uh, Brian is very affordable for the services we're getting from him. And we don't know what the next racehorse is going to look like. You don't change racehorses mid-race. If you know you're getting and you have something you can work with right now, that's providing what we need and understands the challenges we have as a city. I think that's where we, we can build on that foundation. You guys are looking at starting over and bringing in somebody to help you resolve really complex issues uh, that we're facing with our budget. And not to mention all the time that you are not going to spend on working on that budget until probably this spring at the earliest. So that's just, um, something that's really weighing heavy on me and I, and I would hate to see you guys get two months in this process and be looking at the price tag um, that you're going to be facing with hiring a new CA and then scrambling and coming back to Brian at that point. And I kind of foresee that that could be a possibility. But anyways, I've talked to several of you one-on-one. Um, I'll continue to bring it up and I'm going to support whatever decision you make, but uh, long-term financial stability for our city is crucially important. And, uh, and I really like to see us get started on some of those long-term solutions right now instead of having to wait six months or more um, till we have a, a permanent CA in place. Thank you for your time.
Sarah. Dan Barclay, is your hand up again or is that an old hand? Is there any more citizen comment? Brian, is there anyone in the, in the audience there that's hoping to speak again?
No, we're all sitting here at the city hall.
All right, there's nothing else? Uh, meeting adjourned at seven, one P M. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I was hoping that we could do a doodle poll, the schedule and executive session to talk about the pro temp. Rate that we're willing to pay or the contract.
Next week at the regular session, we can include an executive session in that segment.
Perfect.
All right. Good night, you all. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.